Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this regular meeting to order at 4:00 P. M. Counsel, any additions or deletions to today's agenda? Administration? Seeing that, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Nelson?
I'll move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Counselor Nelson. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor. I'll call to question all those in favor. That was passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Counsel, we have minutes for adoption. I will entertain the motion. Counselor Reese?
I'm just calling it up right now. Just one minute, please. Here we go. Um, I would like to move that we adopt the minutes for our regular meeting of counsel for March seventeenth, twenty twenty, standing committee of March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, and special meeting of counsel, April seventh, twenty twenty.
Thank you, Counselor Reese. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor. And I'll call to question all those in favor. That was passed unanimously. Now bring this to our action items for this evening. Uh, we have seven. The first one is amendment to business license by law eleven twenty-six, C. A. O. Olson.
Thank you, your worship. Business license by law eleven twenty-six requires an amendment to duplicate regulations related to cannabis business license requirements that are covered under the Town of Hinton Land Use Bylaw, as well as provincial jurisdiction through the Gaming Liquor and Cannabis Act, as well as the Gaming Liquor and Cannabis Regulation. This item was brought to the standing committee meeting of March twenty-fourth, where committee recommends council give all three readings of by law. Vanna is present to answering any questions.
Thank you, C. A. O. Olson. Counsel, uh, any questions? If not, I could entertain. Counselor Nelson?
I'd like to move that counsel give first reading of business by law eleven twenty-six dash one.
Thank you, Counselor Nelson. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor now. Would anyone like to speak to that? Hey, counsel, any further debate? And seeing none, I'll call to question that counsel give first reading of business by law eleven twenty-six dash one. Counsel, all those in favor? That was passed unanimously. Counsel, anything further for this action item? Would you like to go to rest? Uh, Counsel McGee?
Thank you, your worship. I would like to make the motion that counsel give second reading of business license by law eleven twenty-six.
Thank you, Counselor McGee. Counsel, we now have a motion on table. Uh, anyone would like to speak to that? And seeing none, I'll call to question all those in favor. Uh, my apologies. That was passed unanimously. Uh, counsel, I will entertain another motion if that is the will of counsel. Uh, Counsel Haas?
I'd like to move that counsel give unanimous consent for third reading of business by law, uh, number eleven twenty-six dash one.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Haas. Uh, counsel, any further debates, questions for administration? And seeing none, I'll call to question all those in favor. Again, that was passed unanimously and, um, uh, C. A. O. Olson, we have one more direction. Okay, I just want to confirm. Okay, counsel, is there an appetite for another motion? Uh, counsel McGee?
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to move the counsel give third reading of business license by law eleven twenty-six dash one.
Thank you, counsel. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor. Uh, I'll speak to it very quickly. I know we did, uh, last time when it came to standing, but, uh, thank you, administration, for making these changes. I think anytime we have new policies, especially those who were downloaded from provincial government, and then we have to, uh, make them, uh, work for our community, there's going to be some changes, uh, needed, and changes, uh, have been done, and, uh, it looks like everyone is very happy to ask. Thank you. And if seeing no other, uh, debates, I will call to question that counsel give third reading, uh, of business by law eleven twenty-six dash one. Counsel, all those in favor? That was passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Counsel, anything further for this action item? And seeing none, we will move to the second action item for this evening. Rescind Development Services Policy Sales.
Thank you, your worship. The Development Services Commission has undergone a review of policies to ensure relevancy and to ensure that they're not duplicated in other policies or bylaws. The stand, administration is recommending that the following policies be presented. Number forty-six, Development Deposit, number nine, Residential Land Development Tax Credit, number six-one, Building Permit Plan, number ninety-one, Municipality and Land Development, number ninety-four, Reverb and Development Permit Application Fees. These policies were reviewed at the March twenty-fourth standing meeting. Committee recommended counsel sending all of the aforementioned policies. Um, administration, again, Mr. Vanna is here by his own, and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, C. A. O. Olson. Uh, counsel, uh, any questions, directions, uh, for this action item? Counselor Nelson?
I'd like to move that council rescind policy number zero four six, Development Deposit. And if I could speak to it, I'd only speak once to all of these. I'm really looking forward to a time where all of the policies and bylaws we have are relevant and current, and we don't have a bunch of backlog, old ones that don't play any part. Uh, it would make everyone's life a lot easier, and I'm really, uh, appreciative of the work that's been done so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Nelson. Counsel? My apologies. Was there any direction here thus far? Okay, my apologies. I was speaking too close. Uh, okay, counsel, we have a motion on the floor. Uh, that counsel rescind policy forty-six Development Deposit. Any debate? And seeing none, I'll call to question that counsel rescind policy number forty-six Development Deposit. Counsel, all those in favor? That was passed unanimously. All right, counsel, I would entertain another motion or questions. Counselor Law?
Uh, I move that committee recommend, uh, that committee, sorry about that. That counsel rescind policy number forty-nine, Residential Land Tax, Land Development Tax.
Thank you, Counselor Law. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor. Any questions or debates? And seeing none, I'll call to question that counsel rescind policy forty-nine, Residential Land Development Tax Credit. Counsel, all those in favor? That is passed unanimously. Counsel, once again, any, uh, any direction? Uh, Counsel Haas?
I'd like to make the motion that we rescind policy number, uh, zero six one, Building Permit Plans.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. Uh, counsel, again, we have a motion on the floor. Any debate? Seeing none, I'll call to question that counsel rescind policy six one, Building Permit Plan. Counsel, all those in favor? That is passed unanimously. Again, counsel, uh, if there's any motion. Counselor McGee?
Thank you. I'd like to move that counsel rescind policy number zero nine one, Municipality, Municipality in Land Development.
Thank you, Counselor McGee. Counsel, once again, we have a motion on the floor. Any debates, questions regarding this? And seeing none, I'll call to question that counsel rescinds policy ninety-one, Municipality and Land. Uh, counsel, all those in favor? That is passed unanimously. Uh, and I'm entertaining another motion. Uh, Counsel Reese?
I'd like to move that council rescind policy number zero nine four, Waiver of Development Permit Application Fees.
Thank you, Counsel Reese. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor. And, uh, I'll speak, uh, quickly to the overall motion that's counsel Nelson. I'd like to speak to all the counsel. Thank you, administration, for, uh, cleaning up something that we've, uh, been yearning for for quite a while, and it takes much as counsel also said, very much. Uh, any further debates? And seeing none, I'll call to question that counsel rescind policy ninety-four, Waiver of Development Permit Application Fees. Counsel, all those in favor? That is passed unanimously. Counsel, anything further for this action item? And seeing none, uh, thank you. That, uh, third action item is Asset Management Policy, D. S. sixty-one hundred amendment, uh, C. A. O. Olson.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, so I'll try speaking up in towards microphone. I understand there's a little bit of an issue with audio coming through, so, um, please, you know, at the end, let me know whether that is, has improved. Um, the asset management policy was approved by council in May twenty nineteen, and required to review through the development of an asset management strategy, which is a high-level document that administration have been preparing to guide how the asset management policy would be implemented. Through this review, some amendments are required to add to two documents. At March twenty-fourth standing committee meeting, the amended policy was received by council, and committee recommended council approve the amended Asset Management Policy, D. S. sixty-one hundred as presented. Uh, this is, again, the recommended action for tonight. Um, Vanna is here. Should anyone have any questions as well? Hopefully that came through a little bit better for you guys.
Thank you, C. A. O. Olson. Uh, counsel, any questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain, uh, direction. Counselor Haas?
Yeah, I'd like to move that counsel approve the amendment, amended Asset Management Policy, D. S. sixty-one hundred as presented, please.
Thank you, Counsel Haas. Uh, counsel, we have a motion on the floor.
If I could speak to it?
Absolutely, Counsel Haas.
Yeah, I, I just, again, I want to, uh, express, uh, the, the progression forward with this asset management. Um, and especially during, been thinking a lot about it lately during these, uh, times that we're in right now, and we're going to have some very difficult decisions, you know, financially to make, and having this asset management, um, policy in place to, uh, where to best spend our money moving our community forward, and making those decisions based on, you know, the longevity and things of that nature of our infrastructure, et cetera. So, uh, I'm looking forward to using this policy in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. Well said, and my apologies for cutting you off earlier. Uh, counsel, any further, um, debate? We have a motion on the floor. And seeing none, I will call to question that counsel approve the amended Asset Management Policy, D. S. sixty-one hundred as presented. Counsel, all those in favor? That was passed unanimously. Anything further for this action item, counsel? And seeing none, we will move on to action item number four for this evening. Town of Hinton Safety Code Services Sales.
Thank you, your worship. At the March twenty-fourth standing committee meeting, administration presented a report regarding potential accreditation of the Town of Hinton to provide safety code services. The process includes preparation of an application form, application of quality management plan, and benefits of becoming an accredited municipality include additional revenue, ease of permitting process that spreads its businesses would be able to obtain, all required permits in one location at the town office, as well as improved records through the tracking and monitoring of health and safety permits. This can be achieved at current staffing levels, where the town provides the administrative function and the inspections carried out are through a third-party contract. The recommended actions for this item are that council approves the Town of Hinton becoming an accredited municipality for safety code services, and that council approves the Town of Hinton establishing an administrative function for permit sales and file accreditation that has all inspections and all disciplines performed through a contract with an accredited agency. Again, Mr. Vanna and administration are welcome. Any questions for, uh, comments to my house? Thank you.
Thank you, C. A. O. Olson. Counsel, uh, any questions? Counsel McGee?
Uh, yes, your worship. I'd like to start by making the motion that counsel approves the Town of Hinton becoming an accredited municipality for safety code services, and I'd also like to speak to that if that's all right. Thank you. Uh, honestly, I just really am very appreciative to the work of administration on this. I think what's key here is that really we're getting, I guess, two key elements that are going to benefit the community. The first is the fact that, um, we're going to be offering, uh, safety code services, which is really an essential function for the community and development. And secondly, that it's done in a way that, you know, we're anticipating that this is going to generate revenue. So for myself, that's a win-win, and I just, I appreciate the work that's been done by administration on making this happen. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor McGee. Uh, counsel, we have a motion on the floor. Counselor Haas?
Yeah, I'd just like to also, I, I add, uh, I echo to what Counselor McGee said, but, uh, also that this is something that community, we've heard, I've heard a lot of over the number of years, that, uh, why aren't we accredited and, and have those, uh, you know, abilities to be more, um, uh, forthright, getting those, uh, inspections and things like that done. So I think this is a great move forward for a community, and like Counselor McGee said, it also brings, uh, another stream of revenue into our community. So it's fantastic. Thank you, administration.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. Counsel, any further debate or question? Seeing none, I will call to question that that counsel approved the Town of Hinton becoming an accredited municipality for safety codes services. Counsel, all those in favor? That was passed unanimously. Thank you, counsel. I would entertain another motion or any questions? Uh, Counsel Haas?
I'd like to make the motion that committee recommend counsel, or sorry, that, yeah, direction that committee recommend. Counsel recommends count proceed with the implementing safety codes service delivery model number one, wherein the Town of Hinton establishes administrative function for permit sales and file administration, but has all inspections and all disciplines performed through a contract with an accredited agency. Thank you.
Uh, my, my apologies.
Oh.
Uh, unless you want to make that motion, but I think that was under background, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. I am in the wrong spot. All is, my apologies. Uh... Oh, no, my apologies. I realized. Sorry. No motion.
Okay, no, uh, so you'd like to rescind that motion?
Yeah, I'll rescind it. Sorry. I thought there was two we were supposed to make, so my apologies.
Uh, don't worry. Uh, any, uh, any issues with rescinding that motion, counsel? Uh, Counsel McGee?
Yeah, I'd, I'd rather let Counselor Haas make it because I think initially that was his intention. But on page one thirty of two fourteen, I think the second motion that he was looking for is right below, uh, recommended action. Uh, it begins that counsel approves the Town of Hinton establishing.
Thanks for that, Counsel McGee. Counselor Haas, not to, would you like to make any motion?
Well, yeah, because I remember we had, if I may, sorry, but, uh, we had, um, a few different, and Mr. Vanna, you can maybe, or, uh, C. A. Olson, uh, there was a few different options, different models, and I believe that was the model one that seemed to be the most, uh, recommended. And I was hoping that that were, yeah, the first motion was to continue, to go on, but, uh, to make the motion to proceed with implementing that delivery model one. Is that, or is the, the first motion enough?
Vanna?
Uh, your worship, the, uh, the second motion reads that, uh, counsel approves the Town of Hinton establishing an administrative function for permit sales and file administration, but has the, has all inspections and all disciplines performed through a contract with an accredited agency.
Okay, so is there a prepared motion there? Or Wendy?
If I may, it's on page one thirty.
Okay, I'm trying to find it, so that's where I'm.
Uh, it's on the screen now, counsel.
Yeah, I don't have it.
So for the sake of technical difficulties, if I could ask another counsel.
Yeah. That's what we're doing.
Sorry, I just had to unmute the mic there. Uh, yeah, I'd like to make the motion that counsel approves the Town of Hinton establishing an administrative function for permit sales and file administration, but has all inspections in all disciplines performed through a contract with an accredited agency.
Thank you, Counsel McGee. Um, counsel, we have a motion on the floor. Uh, any further debate or questions? Counsel Nelson?
Now, my question, it, it's referred to that we can do it internally with the staff that we currently have. Um, is that expected to be something ongoing? We've heard a lot over the past, um, months that every department is at capacity and can't take on any new functions. So I just want to make sure that we're not adding a function now and then having to add staff, um, in future budget times or um, potentially partway through this year.
Uh, C. A. O. Olson?
Uh, thank you, worship. Uh, I'll, Mr. Vanna.
Uh, your worship, in terms of, um, our staffing, uh, I believe through the, uh, the amount of staff that we currently have on, on, uh, onboard is, is the right level, and we can perform this function. Uh, it's, this is largely an administrative function, uh, where we're, um, we're already meeting with, uh, customers that come to the, uh, to the desk. We're already, uh, issuing permits. And, and so this is, this is the next logical step. We're also, we also have a, a tracking system that, that, uh, we would input into an existing tracking system. So it's, it's not that we're creating more work for ourselves. What we're doing is sort of streamlining the outside, uh, world and how it deals with safety codes versus what we're doing already internally. And in some cases, we're already duplicating that function because we're helping people through that process when they come to the Town of Hinton.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jack. Very well done. Thank you, Counsel Nelson. Counsel, anything further? Counsel McGee?
Thank you, your worship. Actually, you know, there was one question I had. Uh, it's, it's relatively minor. What would our anticipated, um, date that this process might be starting to go live, if you will, for lack of a better term?
Uh, thank you, your worship. Uh, again, I'll, Mr. Vanna.
Uh, your worship, uh, our anticipation is that, um, counsel makes the motion today. Uh, tomorrow, we're, uh, we're meeting with our consultant to, uh, to finalize the documents, and we'll send those off to, uh, Safety Codes Council right away. And it's probably a couple of months. It's probably the June or July where we would be actively doing that. Our next step is also then to, uh, once we have the paperwork done, then to go out for, uh, for, for bids to, uh, to have a, uh, safety code contractor come and work for us. And so once we have that in place, then we'll have all the pieces in, in place.
Thank you, Mr. Vanna. Thank you, Counselor McGee. Counsel, any further questions, debate? And seeing none, I'll call to question that counsel approves Town of Hinton establishing an administrative function for permit sales and file administration, but has all inspections and all disciplines performed through a contract with an accredited agency. Counsel, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Uh, counsel, anything further for action item number four? And seeing none? Thank you, and we'll move to action item number five, twenty twenty Regional Assessment Review Board appointment, C. A. O. Olson.
Thank you, Mayor Michael. The Regional Assessment Review Board, consisting of partner municipalities from Jasper, Edson, and Hinton, through by law eleven twenty-three, the Regional Assessment Review Board by law states that on a rotating basis, municipalities must appoint a designated chair and a designated clerk. Hinton will provide these positions for twenty twenty. In the fall of twenty nineteen, council appointed board members Nigel Knight and Lee Emish and the board clerk Terry Williams. Recommended actions tonight are that council appoint Nigel Knight as the designated chair for the West Yellowhead Regional Assessment Review Board for a one-year term starting April twenty-first, twenty twenty, and that the designated chair's remuneration and expenses follow the Town of Hinton Remuneration Policy, P. L. eleven zero three. Uh, the second, uh, recommended action is that council appoint Terry Williams as the designated clerk for the West Yellowhead Regional Assessment Review Board for a one-year term starting April twenty-first, twenty twenty. Uh, Ms. Williams is also present by the office answering any questions that she might have on the item.
Thank you, C. A. O. Olson. Uh, counsel, any, uh, question? If not, I would entertain a motion. Counselor Nelson?
I'd like to move that counsel appoint Nigel Knight as the designated clerk for the West Yellowhead Regional Assessment Review Board for a one-year term starting April twenty-first, twenty twenty, and that the designated chair's remuneration expenses follow the Town of Hinton Council Remuneration Policy, C. L. eleven oh three. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Nelson. Uh, counsel, we have a motion on the floor. Any debate? Uh, seeing none, uh, I'll simply call to question all those in favor? That is carried unanimously. Counsel, any, uh, I would entertain another motion? Uh, counsel, counsel law?
And I would move that counsel appoint Terry Williams as the designated clerk for the West Yellowhead Regional Assessment Review Board for a one-year term starting April twenty-first, two thousand twenty.
Thank you, Counsel Law. Counsel, again, we have a motion on the floor. Any debate? And seeing none, I'll call to question all those in favor? That was passed unanimously. Counsel, anything further for this action item? And seeing none, thank you. That, we move on to action item number six for this evening. Tax rate by law eleven forty-five and supplementary by law number eleven forty-six, C. A. O. Olson.
Thank you, your worship. Um, so the, the tax rate by law and supplementary tax by law are being presented to the council. Uh, the tax rate by law, uh, budget was set to and approved by council March seventeenth. Tax rate by law is required to generate general municipal taxation approved in that budget, as well as affect the education property tax levy and the Evergreen Foundation levy. For this item tonight, the recommended action is to provide all three readings of by law. Um, I'll move into the supplementary assessment by law intro, uh, and then we can move back and approach each of these individually. Uh, so the supplementary assessment by law is also before council's package for adoption and incorporates two components, the authorization for the town to provide assessive fund new improvements slated occupied review during the twenty nineteen tax year, and authorization for the properties listed on the supplementary assessment for uh, tax that the current year's tax by law pre. The recommended action for this by law as most famous to provide all three readings. Uh, administration, being in this spot, are present tonight to answer any questions that you might have. Uh, and we can start with the factors by law and the supplementary assessment by law.
Thank you, C. A. O. Olson. Counsel, uh, any questions? If not, I wouldn't entertain a motion for it. Counselor Nelson?
I'd like to move that counsel give first reading of tax rate by law eleven forty-five. And with that motion, I did have one relatively trivial question, but what is C. S. R. D.? It's on page, um, one forty-seven of two fourteen, and it's not referenced anywhere else. And I did a quick Google search, and I just don't know what it is. It's beside, it says A. S. S. F. and C. S. R. D. I know what A. S. S. F. is.
I'm sorry, C. A. O. Olson.
Uh, sorry, uh, counsel, I'm not which page is that on?
Uh, one forty-seven of two fourteen. It's with where the school, um, part is.
I'm, I'm sure of what that, um, apologies of, of what that acronym stands for. Is that something that you can verify for us?
Uh, yeah, thank you, um, Ms. Olson through to counsel. Actually, it is, um, something that has been carried forward on the by law. And at this exact moment, I know it's, uh, to do with, um, the school tax. As we are going through this, I will try and come back to that with a good answer. I don't have it right now. Sorry.
Right, thank you. That's all I have. Mr. W.
Right, thank you. That's all I have. Mr. Chair? Thank you, Counselor Nelson. Uh, this box, CEO Olson. Counsel, anything further? We do have a motion on the floor. Uh, Counselor McGee?
Thank you, your worship. You know, I, I try to make a habit of this every tax year. Uh, just to remind those people who might be watching council or following up on this, is that we're responsible for collecting, of course, not only our own taxes through municipal levies, but also the educational property tax levy and the evergreens levy. Uh, so it's, it's important for folks to understand that it's, it's not simply the town, uh, that these, you know, these sort of three levies are combined. And so not to, you know, not to be surprised by that and to understand that those are, those are different items that end up almost looking like one.
Thank you for that, uh, Counselor McGee and for that clarity on that. Uh, counsel, anything further? And uh, seeing none, I'll call to question that council give first reading of tax rate bylaw eleven forty-five. Counsel, all those in, uh, Counselor Haas, my apologies. Your hand. Oh, you're voting early. That doesn't count for two votes. Uh, call to question that council give first read for tax rate bylaw eleven forty-five. Counsel, all those in favor? That was passed unanimously. Uh, counsel, I would entertain another motion. Uh, Counselor Stashik?
I'd like to move that council give second reading of tax rate bylaw number one one four five.
Thank you, Counselor Stashik. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor. Any debates? Seeing none, I'll call to question that council give second reading of tax rate bylaw eleven forty-five. Counsel, all those in favor? That is passed unanimously. Thank you. I would entertain another motion if that is a real counsel. Counselor Haas?
Like to make the motion that council give unanimous consent for third reading of tax rate bylaw number eleven forty-five.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. Uh, we have a motion on the floor. I have Counselor Nelson.
Um, I will be voting against this. Simply, it's been four days since we've seen the first, uh, sorry, seen our finalized budget for the first time and we just got detailed capital yesterday. So I'm just not, um, four days for me isn't enough to have gone through everything to be comfortable with it to give third and final reading. So I'll be voting against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Nelson. Uh, I guess my question to administration is uh, any any effects or or issues with passing of the next regular council?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, it will delay preparation of the tax rate and the tax bonuses that will um, I'll, to Ms. Fox, the chief would like to add anything as well, but uh generally we send out tax mid-May, um, and with the next regular being May fifth to come forward. It, it might be, uh, it might pose a bit of a restriction to that. Um, Ms. Fox, is there anything that you would like to add as far as the impact?
Yeah, thank you, um, Mayor Michael, through to council. Uh, you'll have to bear with me just a little bit. Um, it seems everybody's on the internet at this time and everything I'm trying to do is freezing on my computer. However, what I would say is that the tax rate by law itself is generated from a number that council approved in the budget. Um, the budget itself, um, uh, let me just bring it up here. So the overall budget um is made up of revenues that come from many different sources, one of them being from municipal taxes. Uh, that number that was approved in the budget and that is generating um that tax rates required hasn't changed very easily. Um, you can go to the operating budget that's presented uh in the budget package and see that that net municipal tax number has not changed. Um, just to give a bit of assurance there that the, the tax rate by law itself will not change the budget, nor will the budget um change the tax rate by law at this point because it's already adopted. Um, the numbers that we need for taxes don't change. Um, the motion that was made to approve the budget, the budget put forward uh also incorporates the changes uh that were required um based on, on council. So I can see that some of council might want time to look through the budget. Um, however, I know that that will not impact this tax rate um by law at this point. So in saying that, uh, if you want to put the adoption of the tax rate by law off um for a couple of weeks, it, what it does is it pushes out the time it takes for us to calculate the taxes and then the timing of the tax invoice going out to the public. Um, typically, we try and have that out on May fifteenth. Part of the issue um is that we've deferred uh, or sorry, we've offered a deferral program um which is going to cause the town cash flow issues. So we don't want to hold up um people being able to pay their taxes who actually want to pay their taxes and don't want to defer because that's going to help us uh access the required amount of of cash that the town needs to operate, which right now is a concern. That's the only thing I would say. It would delay the tax invoice going out to the public.
Thank you for that, Ms. Fox, CEO Olson, Counselor Nelson. Uh, counsel, any further uh questions? Debate? And if not, I will call to question that council give unanimous consent for third reading of tax rate by law eleven forty-five. Counsel, all those in favor? Opposed? That was uh, not carried six one. Thank, any, any, uh, Counselor McGee?
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to make the motion that council give first reading of supplementary assessments by law number eleven forty-six.
Thank you, Counselor McGee. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor, any debates? Questions for administration? And seeing none, I'll call to question that council give first reading of supplementary assessment by law eleven forty-six. Counsel, all those in favor? That was passed unanimously. Counsel, I would entertain another motion or question? Counselor Nelson?
Like to move that council give second reading of supplementary assessments by law eleven forty-six.
Thank you, Counselor Nelson. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor, debate? And seeing none, I'll call to question that council give second reading of supplementary assessment by law eleven forty-six. Counsel, all those in favor? That was also passed unanimously. Uh, I would entertain another motion for counsel. Uh, Counselor Wong?
Uh, I would move that council give unanimous consent for third reading of supplementary assessments by law number eleven forty-six.
Thank you, Counselor Wong. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor for unanimous consent. Uh, counsel, any debate or questions for administration? And seeing none, I'll call to question that council give unanimous consent for third reading of supplementary assessment by law eleven forty-six. Counsel, all those in favor? That is passed unanimously and with that, I would entertain another motion. Counselor Race?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that council give third reading of supplementary assessments by law eleven forty-six.
Thank you, Counselor Gray. Again, council, we have a motion on the floor, any debate questions? And seeing none, I will call to question that council give third reading of supplementary assessment of by law eleven forty-six. Counsel, all those in favor? That was passed unanimously. Counsel, anything further for this action item? If not, thank you, CEO Olson, Ms. Fox. And that will bring us to our last action item for this evening. Uh, waste rate by law number nine three three dash four, C A O.
Thank you, Mayor Michael. Through the twenty twenty budget process, a five percent commercial waste increase was approved to bring the town closer to cost recovery for this service. If the annual budget is approved with revised rates, the waste rate by law must be amended to reflect the rate. A recommended action for the waste rate by law today is to provide all three readings. Uh, Mr. Hawk and Mr. Belashin are in tents tonight by applying for a private firm as well uh to answer any questions that council may have on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, CEO Olson. Counsel, any questions? Um, that's Counselor Race?
Can I get a page number of the agenda for this item?
Two hundred and five. Anything further, Counselor Race? Counsel, uh, any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion. Counselor Nelson?
I'd like to move that council give waste rate by law ninety-three, nine thirty-three dash four, first reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Nelson. We have a motion on the floor, counsel, any debate or questions for administration? And seeing none, I'll call to question that council give waste rate by law nine three three dash four, first reading. Counsel, all those in favor? That is passed unanimously. Counsel, I would entertain another motion. Counselor Wong?
I'll move that council give waste rate by law number nine thirty-three dash four, second reading.
Thank you, Counselor Wong. We've got the other motion on the floor, debate? Question? And seeing none, I'll call to question that council give waste rate by law nine three three dash four, second reading. Counsel, all those in favor? That is passed unanimously. Uh, counsel, I would entertain another motion if that is will. Uh, Counselor Haas?
I'd like to move that council give waste rate by law number nine three three dash four, unanimous consent for third reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor for unanimous consent for this evening. Any debate or questions? And seeing none, I'll call to question that council give waste rate by law nine three three dash four, unanimous consent for third reading. Counsel, all those in favor? That's also passed unanimously. Uh, that would, I would entertain another motion. Counselor Race?
I move the council give waste rate by law number nine thirty-three dash four, third reading.
Thank you, Counselor Race. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor. Any debate or question? Seeing none, I'll call to question that council give waste rate by law nine three three dash four, third reading. Counsel, all those in favor? That is passed unanimously. Anything further for this action item, counsel? Seeing none, that will do it for our action items for this evening. That'll bring us to our information items. Um, twelve point seven million Canadian volunteers give their time to help others, contributing close to two billion volunteer hours per year. Volunteers in Hinton mentor our children, eat our hungry, comfort our lonely, beautify our green spaces and fundraise for charitable organizations. And Hinton volunteers are young, old, families, workers, retirees, men and women of all ages and backgrounds. The collective results of the work done by our town's volunteers is that Hinton is a more desirable place to live. And coaches, mentors, parades, music festivals, community dinners, tournaments, food, toys, auto drives, environmental cleanups, boards of directors, health promotion, live theater, musical performance, parent councils, bike trails, fun runs, cultural events, neighborhood watch, caregivers. An organization in Hinton that rely on volunteers includes such fundamental organizations as the Royal Canadian Legion, Hinton Healthcare Foundation, Hinton Rotary Club, Kid Club, Resident Care Foundation, Hinton United Way, churches, share shop, food bank, S P C A, bridges, health, friendship center, Hinton Search and Rescue, Community Greenhouse, Hinton Indoor Playground. And I, Marcel Michaels, Mayor of Hinton, do hereby proclaim April nineteenth to the twenty-fifth of twenty twenty as National Volunteer Week and urge my fellow citizens to recognize the crucial role played by volunteers in our community. And if, if I may add, uh, if, if you see a volunteer, please thank them. They are truly the backbone to any community and Hinton, we are extremely strong. There's uh many, many people that we know uh that go above and beyond uh what, what someone can do in order to uh make sure that uh any cracks, any issues in our community that is missing uh is uh, is, is there for, for people who are, who are vulnerable to those who just uh certain amenities. So thank you very much to every volunteer uh in our community. And with that, uh, on information items, I would entertain a motion for counsel. Uh, Counselor Haas?
Uh, I'd like to make the motion that coun- uh, council accept information packages number one and number two for April twenty-first, twenty twenty.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor, debate, questions regarding that? Seeing none, I'll call to question all those in favor? That is passed unanimously. And that will bring us to a report. And tonight I will start on the screen from my top left, Counselor Haas.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, well, not too much, too much to report. Um, I do have a library board meeting coming up next week. Uh, so it's our first meeting. We're going to do it electronically, of course, uh, but our first meeting since our closure to see how things are going with our online stuff and uh how they continue to deal with this uh situation with the, the closure and uh all those things. Um, other than that, I, I sent an email, but I just wanted to uh extend again gratitude towards the town itself, specifically to C A Olson and the E O C team and uh specifically to, I'm guessing, I'm not sure of which department infrastructure, but uh we needed some uh tents for uh some health, for the healthcare center and extremely helpful, went above and beyond to be very helpful to the staff um getting ready for some of that work they need to do in the, in the elements outside. So thank you very much for that. And other than that, I have nothing else to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. Counselor Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, not a huge amount to report. Uh, most committees have been pretty quiet. Um, outside of Community Futures, we've, we've been having pretty regular uh really relatively casual meetings um just to kind of keep up to date. But uh there's some important information to share in that uh Community Futures did receive some federal funding. Uh, so Community Futures is currently working with the Community Futures Network of Alberta and the other offices in the province to establish eligibility requirements and application processes for lending uh the new money that they've received. Uh, clients in Hinton and the West Yellowhead are encouraged to contact Nancy or Tim, Community Futures West Yellowhead office, to find out what is available for them to apply for with the Government of Canada. And as soon as they're able to lend money to businesses in the West Yellowhead, they will let everybody know. So uh really exciting. I, I forget the number, but it was something in the range of two hundred and eighty-seven million dollars to Community Futures uh across the country. And uh hopefully strategic investments like that will help uh kickstart things as, as we figure our way out of this. So uh it's very exciting and, and hats off to all the work that Community Futures does. So I'll have, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Nelson, and thank you, uh, Community Futures, uh, great speaker. Uh, with that, Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, with regards to committees, uh, C A Q is getting ready to launch uh public feedback sessions at the start of April, but obviously those have been postponed for now. Uh, with regards, just following up on what Counselor Nelson said about Community Futures, uh, they also have a uh, they did a business survey uh through uh part of April, just to get a sense of what's going on with local businesses. Uh, don't want to go too much into the details. The results are available on the website. Eighty-one responses in Hinton. Uh, obviously some, some dire news for some, but also some surprisingly uh positive results there as well. Uh, surprising how many people are up and going still, so at least based on the results they received. Uh, and that is about all I have.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Wong. That brings me to Counselor Stashik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only official committee meeting that I've had in the last couple of weeks was a Zoom meeting of the regional economic development coalition. Wasn't really much of an agenda for that meeting. It was more just a roundtable to kind of discuss what's going on in the community. And obviously, the talk centered around the effect that COVID-19 is having on our local economy and maybe some issues that we'll be facing moving forward, coming out of this. No real news to report coming out of that meeting, though. And other than that, I have no scheduled committee meetings coming up, so just a wish for everyone to stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you for that. That brings me to Counsel Reese.
I wish I had a lot to report, but I don't, sir. I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Counsel Reese. Counsel McGee.
Thank you, your worship. Really, the only update from committee meetings is the golf board. Both our director of the course, Mr. Kyle Crawford, is working hand in hand with Heather Way from the town. I'm not going to spoil it, but they've got a great presentation coming to council. They've been doing a lot of hard work on it, trying to get it ready. As you can imagine, though, that's impacted by the fact that we are dealing with closed golf courses presently. The information you get may change. You know, as that information sort of unravels from the province, if our health ministers make the, you know, determine that it's appropriate and safe to open courses, that potentially could have some impacts, but you're going to get a really great presentation. So I don't want to steal anybody's thunder by stinking you too much information.
Thank you, Counsel McGee. And with that, for myself, I have a waste meeting tomorrow, perhaps next week, people get more information on that. I do want to take a quick moment and thank our administrative team. The last month has been extremely upside down for everyone in considering a big agenda tonight. A lot of work has been done on things that are almost secondary for what we're dealing with. So I do want to thank every single staff in our organization, our leadership. I could just imagine the stress. I'm not able to see them. They put a gate in between them and I during the day. But I hear a lot of people, well, not a lot, not too many, they social distance, I'm sure. But honestly, on behalf of counsel, and really the community, thank you for dealing with was an already full plate in dealing with the pandemic. We appreciate your hard work the last while, so continue on. And if there's anything you need from us, let us know. A sincere thank you to all of you. Lastly, I do want to quickly just mention our thoughts and prayers for our brothers and sisters out east of Halifax. And I think we all know what transpired there and we're thinking about them. But more importantly, to thank our CMP. And I'll extend that even further, whether it's firefighters, EMS, all the people with their lives on the line for duty. All lives are equal, but it's a little bit different when you lose a life, a life, you know, protecting other people. So we're fortunate here that that event did not happen here. So let's take a moment, thank those who protect us. And we never know what's going to happen tomorrow. So let's appreciate today. Thoughts and prayers out east, thoughts and prayers for those who continue to risk their lives for us in our community. Thank you very much for that. And with that, that's all for me, and I will hand it over to our chief administrative officer.
Thank you, your worship. That's one item from me tonight. This afternoon, a civic sent a note regarding judicial approval for the reopening of Hinton Kids for Success to provide childcare for essential service workers who are struggling to find care for their little ones. The approval is for up to 24 kids, with only ten children allowed in any location at any time. So three locations have been selected within our town buildings to provide that service. This is a fee-for-service arrangement on a first come, first served basis for children aged five to 12. Information is on our website. Registration begins tomorrow with you, and the start date for care will be Monday, April 27th. So that's good news for our essential service workers that may be struggling in that regard. As well, I just want to echo the mayor's thanks to our town staff, their support, their professionalism, ability to make adjustments to their work, their workspaces, their hours, their availability, their budget, to name it. I'm very appreciative of myself, the support that they're providing, and we couldn't do it without them. So I just wanted to echo that thanks. I'm very grateful for that.
Thank you, Seale Olson. That brings us to administrative inquiries for tonight. Counsel, are there any? That brings us to notice of motion. Any notice of motion, counsel? And seeing none, I will entertain a motion to go on camera with a five-minute break. Counsel McGee.
I'd like to move that we go in camera following a five-minute break.
Thank you, Counsel McGee. Counsel, all those in favor? Thank you very much, everyone.